Well, being seven o'clock, we will commence the Holbrook School Committee meeting of Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Call the meeting to order, and I would ask you all to please rise and join us in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, public, under public participation, we have an item, citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens who would wish to make a statement? Seeing none, we will turn to reports. I see a student from the Student Advisory Committee, welcome.
Thank you.
Are you prepared to give a report?
I am always prepared to give a report.
Always prepared. I'm very impressed with that statement. I like the alon there. Would you please make a statement?
So, it'll be a little shorter, this meeting, because it is a by meeting for the month of December. So, for academics, our support goes out this Friday.
Can we put this light on?
Which hopefully will go well for a lot of students. Student government, we're doing a secret snowflake, which we've done in the past years. If you don't know what a student snowflake is, it is when members of the student council get assigned a teacher. The first day, you get them a card, second day candy, and the third day is a gift of five dollars or less, just to show appreciation to the teachers during this season of giving, just to make sure that they know that we appreciate them for all that they do for us. We're doing Holbrook Santa as well. The National Junior Honor Society is doing a can drive, you know, donating food to the local food pantry. The National Honor Society is doing a raffle to raise money for teens, especially this year, because a lot of them had signed up opposed to younger children, which we will as well be doing a drive for them. And we actually, it is a little bit of incentive to have the kids donate a little more this year. We are actually having a raffle for gift cards, so hopefully that will spur some more donations than usual. Back to athletics, of course, my favorite section, girls' basketball varsity team, we're one and one, we're, have a young team, and I see a very bright season ahead. JV is oh and two, but they're progressing well with Ms. McCarthy, really just teaching them the basics, and they're getting along well. The boys' basketball is doing very well this season. The boys' basketball teams opened this season on Wednesday at Upper Cave. The JV one team won sixty-three to thirty-one, so quite the upset, and the boys' varsity team won sixty-five to forty-three, with Jeremiah King scoring twenty-seven points. This victory was especially grand for Mr. Richard Gifford. This is his three-hundred-and-ninety-ninth win for basketball. Hopefully, this Monday, he will secure his four-hundredth as the first East Massachusetts coach to win four hundred wins in basketball and three hundred baseball wins, so quite the repertoire. Since three-hundred-and-seventy-four of these victories were from his career at Avon, we have, including the four state championships and the other various things he has accomplished there, the Avon community has been invited to celebrate with the Holbrook community, of course. Old rival coaches, players, both Holbrook and Avon will be in attendance. Mr. Bolger, the athletic director, as you know, is arranging a ceremony post-game along with the help of Mrs. Curtis and the Boosters Club. In addition, H-CAM will have six cameras filming the game. They will interview former players, both Avon and Holbrook, as well as community members. This in connection with H-CAM documenting the road to four hundred, tracing Coach Gifford's paths, which included the Peace Corps, the Peace Corps to now. All here and watching on TV are invited to attend this historic athletic moment on Monday night at six P.M., when Holbrook hosts Diamond. This game follows the seventh and eighth grade team at three fifteen, as well as the JV game at four thirty. And then performing arts, if, I don't know how many of you attended the holiday concert, but a hundred and thirty alumni attended and participated, which is amazing, great turnout. The theater department sang at the Yards of Pleasure Saturday morning, I heard it was beautiful, and the play is back to the eighties, and they just released the casting for that, so that's great. And other than that, that is about it.
Are there any questions to our student advisor? Yes, Member Davis?
Do you have, I know we have some fall All-Stars. Do you have them? Because I forgot to write them down.
Yeah. For volleyball, it's myself and Megan Carrick, and for soccer.
Madison Man.
Madison.
Riley Harper.
Yep, she, she won, um...
She was also Player of the Year.
Player of the Year.
And Charlotte Harper was Coach of the Year. Boys' soccer was, uh...
Cameron Marshall and me.
And McKenley. And football, we're all, actually, all three were Avon players. Jack's parent. I have a little smile.
Okay. Well, let me just say this to you, your words have warmed us on this very chilly evening, and we appreciate very much hearing all that good news coming from Holbrook, and thank you to the athletic directors for filling us in on some more detail regarding that.
I just figured they should be publicly acknowledged.
It's a pleasure to hear. I agree, and the, and maybe we should have that, some, some extra acknowledgement of that at some point during the year.
Yeah, and we're all recognized at the sports banquet, but...
Right. No, I agree with you. I think that there should be some recognition. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent report. I see under B, building update slash transition plan, Dr. Lally.
Thank you. I wanted to first mention, though, if you don't mind, the Thanksgiving game next year. The league thought that we should be paired up with South Shore Voc-Tech instead of West Bridgewater, because it's not a good competition, and West Bridgewater, Avon...
They've had enough of us, eh?
Well, I think they want to make it fair for everyone, so, you know, we spoke with Paul Zinni at Avon and the A.D. and the principal, and, and West Bridgewater's okay with it. So, that's, I think, the plan for next year. They're going to make sure that our kids have a little more competition, or a little better matched competition for the Thanksgiving game, to make everybody, I think, more excited about it.
Okay.
And one other thing that's not on there is, tonight, I made a One Call Now message to, out to families because...
Connected.
Connected, right, sorry, the wrong one, about the buses will be picking up students tomorrow. If they're walking on their way to school, even if they're not bus, they aren't eligible for the bus, they will pick them up tomorrow, because it's supposed to be pretty cold. So, I just want to make sure that people who are, who might be listening tonight would know.
It's cold, huh?
Yeah, so it's supposed to be pretty bad tomorrow.
Right. All right. Now, let's turn to the building updates slash transition plan.
Okay. So, we had a meeting this morning, and one of the major points is that the window testing is complete. They're going to begin testing of the curtain wall.
What is window testing? What does that mean?
They were, they just, they test them for leakage, that type of thing, so now they're, they're all, you know, they found different fixes for things, and they've tested all the windows that they needed to.
I don't know if the windows had to take an exam.
Well...
Yes, they have to ask the leak test.
Smart windows. Okay.
And, okay, so they're working on the built-in cabinets, they're putting, they're installing those right now, so we went over last week, and they were pretty nice, those cabinets, don't you think?
Yeah, yeah, they were nice.
Yeah, so they are, we've talked about it with teachers, showing some pictures of the built-ins from West Bridgewater and view from here, and they're pretty much the same in every room, except in the elementary, where they have a, they have a cubby kind of arrangement there, so that, you know, it's built right into the walls, which is nice. Now, we're working on salvage lists from classrooms, so teachers are developing those. We have a salvage list that is a generalist for plaques and memorial items that we're taking with us, but these are now classroom items, so that things that are in good condition will be considered for the move. They're also painting the walls over there, so it looks pretty nice. We've had furniture meetings that have been ongoing, and people have discussed typical classroom setups for each wing, so the needs for the elementary and the secondary are a little different, so those have been taken into consideration. Christine Golden visited the West Bridgewater Library on Tuesday, so she's looked at the setup there, the, and the furniture, and she was pretty pleased with the flexibility of that area.
For our next regular meeting, can you update the transition schedule that we had suggested?
Well, I'm glad you asked.
You did?
Oh, yes.
All right.
So, I will pass that.
I had to ask, is that...
No, it was getting there, you know?
All right.
That was after my, my other pieces.
All right, so what else?
And the last one is technology discussions are continuing, and on Friday, there'll be a webinar with POS system, and to see how that option will fit our needs for the, the point-of-sale for the cafeteria. So, it's a mosaic clause, one we're looking at on Friday, so...
Interesting. Are there any questions for Dr. Lally, with regard to her report? Seeing none, we'll turn to Ms. Lugo, our school business administrator. Good evening. Would you kindly go through your fiscal seventeen report for this meeting?
Sure. So, you have an FY seventeen budget in front of you, again, it's broken down into two parts. The first part is the salaries, and salaries are running smoothly, there's no problems with that. The second half of the budget shows the operational costs, and if you look on the last page, page... Actually, there's a page. Anyway, if you look at the page five of six on the operational expenses, towards the bottom, you'll see Fed Tuitions Friday is, was in a deficit of seven hundred thousand dollars, which we knew that, because that gets funded partially by the circuit breaker account. So, since the date that I ran this, which was back on December sixth, I've done a transfer of five hundred thousand of the expenses from the budget into the circuit breaker account, so we've just, we've used a five hundred thousand already for the circuit breaker funds.
Can you make a specific note of that for us, what you just said, in two lines? I'd like to share that with the finance committee.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Now, please continue, I didn't need to interrupt you.
Actually, that's all I had on the FY seventeen report, otherwise, everything's working, being fine.
Okay. Now, let me ask you this question, let me ask the committee this question, are there any questions with regard to this report? Not, all right. We're going to take up the review of the budget. How long do you anticipate the presentation being, Dr. Lally?
The presentation tonight?
Are you presenting the budget tonight?
No, no, we're just, we're, no, I think that we're...
Just offering it?
Yes.
Okay. So, here's the story, okay, here's the story. I think this is rather late, and according to our, your own budget list, I would have hoped to have gotten this in November, I'm not faulting anyone by that, but I think that we're obviously not going to vote on the budget tonight, so what I would like to do is, I would like to have a subcommittee meeting on Monday, if that's possible, at five thirty, and I would like to call a special meeting to take up the budget this coming Thursday at seven P.M. Just that will be the only item on the agenda. Do you think that you will be able to have a presentation? When are you going to give us a presentation on the budget?
Well, I, if you wanted it then, if...
Is that all right? Okay, good. So, we'll expect the presentation, in the meantime, we'll accept the budget given to us, and we will look at it, and we will vote on it at our next meeting.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, please.
You know, I did take a look at it, and it's obvious that you put a lot of time and energy into it, and it's comprehensive, and I just wanted to say thank you. I know it's taken some time to work together, but obviously, a lot of folks did a lot of work on this, so...
Now, there were some questions about even as it's been done, for example, on the pie charts, I think the middle school needs to be included, and I, and Member Davis, you had some suggestions, did you not?
Just because we've been talking about transparency, we want to make sure everybody knows and understands where we're coming from, and, I mean, the first thing I noticed, and, and again, I, I use this handy-daisy PowerPoint that I gave to everybody from the school committee conference, but just, the first eleven pages are all text, I mean, they're various, there are multiple items, but if there are ways to kind of, you know, break that up with an infographic or something, just to, because, you know, people, you know, people, and they're mostly bullet points, but, you know, after a while, people kind of glaze over, and, you know, we want people to actually, you know, look at the budget. And maybe a, on, on page fifteen, where it has the historical data on the budget, my thinking was to kind of combine that, you know, the budget trends, into a, maybe a bar graph that identifies the source of funds. You know, we know we supplement our budget, I mean, everybody knows we supplement the budget with grants, and they should be in there, so people can see, first of all, what the trend that I'm assuming is that the funding from grants is going down, whereas the funding from the town is going up to offset that, but I think people need to see that.
You brought up a point about insurance, which I thought was interesting.
And it came through on Twitter, we, the, for Out of Desi, this was in fact the end of last week, well, that's why I printed it out, Office of School Finance has the Chapter Seventy Net School Spending Compliance, budgeted FY sixteen and actual FY fifteen, and one of the things, because, you know, FinCom's always saying that they're well over net school spending, and that is a true statement, and it's a legitimate statement. However, in FY fifteen, FY sixteen, I'm sorry, three point seven million dollars are insurance, retired employee insurance, employer retirement contributions, and, I mean, they're important expenses, but it also means that twenty percent of our school budget is going to items that are not going to direct or indirect services to students.
And isn't it true that not all towns report those scholars there?
Yeah, it has to do with who's grandfathered under the law, and I don't really know that, but, you know, and I'm not saying, you know, the town's not wrong, and they're legitimate expenses, but I think also the community should know that twenty percent of our budget is gone, and it doesn't even get to us. And, you know, it's just a suggestion, as I was going over...
Good suggestion.
Over the budget, and, but, I mean, I do appreciate the notes in the right-hand column, that they're very helpful. The other thing is, if there, if we could get the number of staff, you know, where it says English teachers, what, you know, there's a dollar amount on that line, and what does that equal?
Mm-huh.
Both for us and...
For the TEs.
Yeah, just so we, you know, we can get a handle on, on what the number actually represents. It represents X number of people.
Now, you know, I think those are all legitimate tweaks. I want to say this, that I did enjoy seeing what you have put in here. I thought you did a very good job of articulating particularly some of the items that have had savings or have had consolidations, but I would say to those who are interested in our schools, that, you know, we are going to be in a battle here, you know, for the survival of a viable school system, unfortunately, because, I mean, the percentages that the school committee has hinted at, even the percentages that, you know, I've heard, and, you know, again, I want to look at the figures and have conversations, they're nowhere near what this proposed budget is. In fact, they're nowhere near even just the static incremental steps that, you know, are contractual obligation. So, we're really going to need everybody's help. I mean, everybody has to recognize that they're a stakeholder. I mean, it comes a time when you have to put aside a sense of something and fight for what's right here, and fighting for what's right is a meaningful budget that, you know, makes common sense, and we're going to need everyone's help to do that. You know, we're only flesh and blood, you know, we go there, and I don't mind getting bludgeoned and beaten up, and, you know, I'll fight the fight, but it's a great help to have support, support from members of the community there, people who are in the know, you know, the school department knows what it needs, and you're dealing with a lot of people who really have very limited understanding of what it takes to run a school department, what resources are required, what, what the nature of funding is and isn't, and I do agree that we need to be transparent, but we also have to articulate the meaningful need here and the cost of not funding properly the schools. And, you know, there's a lot of money been tucked away in various accounts, and people may think that that's great, but the real question is, you know, you've got the greatest asset in a town, which are the human beings, the students that go, and the great faculty that teaches them, and the administrators and staff, the support staff, who do a terrific job in the school district, day in and day out, and particularly the alumni, who recognize the value of what kind of an education they got in the Holbrook Public School System. So, it's my earnest hope that out of this new school and this budget, a new sense of community will arise, that we'll be able to articulate a shared vision of where we're going, and that's why when we are addressing this, we're so passionate, if you will, about tweaking it in a way that hopefully can do that, but we also really beseech all members of our community to support the budget when it's in its final form, and, and that by support, talk to your friends, talk to people you know, talk to parents and students, go to some of these meetings that you wouldn't normally go to, and, and try to add your voice and show that, you know, there's, this is not being done in a vacuum. I mean, I wish there was this benign thing, and I know people have good intentions, but unless you explain it in a way that, you know, makes people feel a compelling need, they may not see it the same way you do, and, and I'm hopeful that, that can work. I don't know what the rest of the committee believes on that sentiment, but I think we all share that same sentiment.
Yeah.
Well, all right. So, thank you very much for that. We'll look forward to reading it. Are there any other, yes, please.
So, I did have some questions and comments and stuff, but I'll present them during the subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
But if Barbara John had any additional recommendations, added suggestions, they can just, you know, make sure they get to us, and we will be able to articulate them to...
That's a good point. Thank you.
So, make sure, we'll do some more before I leave prior to Monday.
I can give you my notes.
Great, well, thank you.
Great. Okay.
Final, final, a difference?
Well, for that, we'll now turn to any school committee, subcommittee member reports. Are there any subcommittee member reports? Secretary Elteria?
So, thanks, in regards to the foundation, myself and Vice Chair, along with Julie Hamilton, met with the president of a foundation at another school, and was able to get some information and some samples of their bylaw and other information as well, so we'll get that. So, we're moving, as, and in addition, we continue to meet with H-CAM regarding their proposed partnership.
Mm-huh. Well, I just want to say on that, once you come to some, you know, suggestion, we're going to have to have that fully vetted by both the bond council of the building, as well as our own counsel.
Absolutely.
Because, again, we cannot, we, we have to meet the strict criteria of those bonds, and what they require us to do and not to do, and I want to make sure that we comply with the, the letter and the spirit of that law.
And that has been shared with them as well, and we also felt that they should come before the board and, you know, present their...
Yeah, my sense is, why don't you give us like an interim report at some point in the next, maybe, not this meeting, but the next regular meeting, and then after that, we can set something up, and then we can take on to further advisement. All right? Are there any other subcommittee reports? Yes?
I did have a chance to speak with Chris Horn, one of our associates.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Who is a consultant who may be able to help us with our communication strategy, and he agreed that he, this is part of what he does, is part of his business, and he feels he would be able to help us. He is a consultant, so he charges for his services, and what he said was that the minimum would be for a, say, a two-hour conference call, it would be a few hundred dollars, something on that order, but then it could go up from there if, if we asked him to do some prep work, like do some research or create some documents for us, that naturally would be more, and it could be an ongoing, continuing consulting arrangement.
Right.
He did also mention that, I explained our, the budget situation, that we'd like to be able to promote it better in the community. He said he could help with that, and he understands the urgency, given the timing of it, and he could be with us sooner rather than later if we wanted to.
Mm-huh.
And I told him that I would bring that to the committee.
Well, thank you for sharing that, maybe we can talk about that further. I, obviously, if there's some bidding issues or not, I want to make sure that we're within the parameters.
The other point that he, that he brought up, I spoke to him on behalf of the school committee, and he does work with school committees, but he mentioned that in terms of a communication strategy or plan, that it's, it's really, it could be, the committee can help formulate it, but it's really owned by the superintendent and implemented by the superintendent, so superintendent would be a part of that process.
Of course, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure.
Very, very informative. I appreciate you getting back to us on that.
No problem.
All right. Are there any other subcommittee reports? Seeing none, we'll turn to school committee member reports. Are there any?
Of course.
All right. Member Davis, please proceed.
I attended a sports banquet, and congratulations to all the All-Stars who were recognized there. The annual holiday concert was very well done, as usual, there was a good turnout. Evidently, the gym wasn't the best place for it, but it was a larger-than-normal crowd, and three of us were at that conference, uh, concert, sorry. It was nice to see that the high school band is growing, and it was great to have the alumni back to sing the Halloween chorus, as was done in the past, and conducted by retired choral director, Michael Harper, and it would be great to be able to continue that practice, as well as maybe bringing back the alumni band for sleigh ride, as we've done in the past. Last night, after the girls' basketball game, I went to the junior senior high school showcase, Path to Success, and I, I printed out the main page, but it was very well presented, lots of really good information, and I know Dr. D'Amelio had said that she would have the PowerPoint posted on the school website. I actually took pictures of the slides, which were not great, but I took pictures in Instagram and tweeted them, so... so, um, they are out there as part of my communications subcommittee role. And, you know, as we transitioned to the new building, uh, with the new schedule, that, that was really good information to get out. And that is the end of my report.
I'd like to make just one comment.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the, the event last night, but, um, but I think that's, it's a great thing for us to have done, and, um, uh, we need to promote ourselves in the community and to the community, uh, because the, the other high schools competing for our students are doing the exact same thing, and we should be doing this as well. So I, I think it was a great idea, and I hope it was a great success. Thanks for doing it.
Well, it sounds like a very progressive step, and I, I, I think that's great. The, um, next item on the agenda are the Records Access Officer assignment, would you please explain that, Dr. Lally?
So there is a new, um, public records law that when, is going into effect on January first, and, um, we have to have, um, somebody designated, or more than one person designated, as the person that would be contacted. So, um, unfortunately for Trish and Bridget, I thought they would be the, the people for it because, um, in the past, we've had some requests, and this has become, uh, more on, um, the radar for people, and we've had, um, requests, and Bridget is, is, um, would commute, would get the request probably, and, um, Trish has been doing the research for it, so, um, you know, that's, it really makes it more of a, um, a combined effort, and, and it makes, gets it right to the person who needs to, because you have to, um, respond within ten days that you, um, you know, for which, whatever you're going to do, either research it more, give them a price if you're going to charge them for, um, for that work, um, you know, so they are, if you don't have that information. So, um, we need to appoint people for that.
All right, so, so, will someone make a motion to appoint Bridget Baker and, uh, Trish Lugo as the Records, uh, Access, uh, Person in accordance with the new, uh, uh, requirements of the general laws to be effective in January?
So moved.
Is there any discussion of this?
What kind of example can you give, well, no, not that I can ask, which, well, it has nothing to do with the appointment.
Okay. All those in favor? That passes. We'll now turn to Chom's collaborative agreement amendment. I have to say, I was a little confused about this. I understand what the amendment is, but my recollection was we had voted to leave this, um, uh, area, and I was concerned that, um, this seemed inconsistent with our previous vote. And Dr. Lally has assured me that she has, uh, spoken to the council of the collaborative and our own legal council, and she has received an opinion that it would not be inconsistent to take this, uh, vote. Is that correct, Dr. Lally?
Not our, um, council, the, the Chom's counselor and the Desi lawyer.
Desi lawyer, we haven't talked to ours, okay.
Right. Because, um, this is, it's a, um, this is just an amendment on how, if there are any, um, proceeds or liabilities.
No, no, I know what the amendment is, but the only, the only question is what was the effect on our prior vote? I didn't want it to appear that we somehow were rescinding it.
No.
Is that the question you asked them?
Yeah, yes, that, well, actually, the lawyer for Chom's was there, and the representative from Desi was there too at the, during the board meeting.
Yes.
And, um, this is all, uh, done within the usual structure for, um, dissolution of a, of a collaborative.
Well, just with the caveat that, uh, we're not rescinding our earlier vote, uh, that if this is a nunk, requires a nunk pro tunk, it will be taken that way, if prior to it, if not, if it's in, if it's still consistent with that, then we will treat it that way. I'll entertain a motion to amend the agreement, um, which reads, um, I wish I had it handy here, but, uh.
Right, we actually voted, the last vote was to agree to dissolve.
Right.
And so this amendment is to disperse the property?
The amendment is to, well, what the amendment is, is to, uh, propose an amended, uh, uh, make an amendment to the actual language in the contract as to distribution, so instead, it, the current version says, distribute surplus funds or capital reserve funds to the member districts on a pro rata basis. Pro rata basis for the distribution of these funds, we determine by the member district's percentage of fiscal participation from the previous year. We're voting to amend that language to read as follows. To distribute surplus funds or capital reserve funds to the five member districts equally, once liabilities have been met. So would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an idea on what the value of those funds might be, it might be nothing?
It might be nothing, but, um, there should be, at this point, there is, um, a surplus, and, but it may go into, um, the health insurance for, you know, offering some health insurance, um, subsidy for some of the employees who are being let go. So it's, it's really, you know, that could be divided up, or it could be, a, a portion of that could be given there, or it might be, um, or it could be some money that's.
But we're not expecting a wake call here?
No. I know, well, that's what I was looking at, but it's, it's not going to offset that, exactly.
Okay, um, all those in favor? All those opposed, that passes. We'll now turn to the minutes, although before we turn to the minutes, I did want to just say that we have extended the time to return the completed evaluations, um, I think you all know that, so.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, are there any amendments that someone would like to make to the minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes dated December first, two thousand sixteen.
So moved. Seventh.
All those in favor? That passes. Now we'll turn to any, is there any old business to be taken up? Is there any new business to be taken up? All right, so we will see you all next Thursday at the seven, uh, P M., and, uh, we will discuss the budget and hear a presentation, uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? These proceedings are closed.